Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council Work Session, December 1st, 2014, meeting to order. At this time, we will review the procedure for tonight's activities. First, thank each of you for being here tonight and thank everyone for their interest in wanting to serve the citizens of Burlington as a potential council member. At this time, I'd like to read out the process for tonight's candidates' interviews. One, the mayor will moderate the procedure. Two, candidates will be recognized in an alphabetical order called individually to the podium where they will be allowed to give a brief opening statement not to exceed three to five minutes, after which the members of council will be given the opportunity to ask questions. At the conclusion of the questions by council, the candidate may, if he or she so desires, give a one- to two-minute final statement. Three, the process will be repeated for each of the three candidates. Four, at the conclusion of the interviews, the candidates will be advised that the selection process will be conducted by a final vote of council at a regular scheduled council meeting. Five, council members will not be limited in the number of questions that they may ask of any candidate, but are asked to be mindful of the need to allow all councilmen the opportunity to participate. As moderator, the mayor will determine the order of questioning. Any questions from the candidates? Any questions from council? Okay, at this time, I'd call on Ms. Kathy Hikes to approach the podium.
Thank you, Kathy.
Now, I'm going to ask you not to read that, but that's a resume for everyone else's information. Mayor Wall, Mayor Protam Fawcett, and Councilmen Butler and Ward. First, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to be among the selected candidates for filling the vacant seat on city council. I last served on the Burlington City Council from 1980 to 1985. In hindsight, I would say that my proudest accomplishment in holding that office was a public hearing on involuntary annexation. The city had proposed taking in the area north and south of Church Street from the western edge of Edgewood Avenue to the Guilford County line. It is hard to imagine now that that was not part of the city, but let me back up. I was very worried about the reaction hundreds of families who lived there might have to this plan, as you can imagine, and I wondered if there were not a good way to involve them in the process, public hearings often not allowing but the most intrepid or angriest people to speak. I wanted them all to know what was going on, so I invited neighborhood leaders identified by city staff to have meetings in their homes, and we invited their neighbors who would be affected by the change. Several meetings were held over several weeks, and the living rooms were standing room only. The many questions that arose were aired in a comfortable place and discussed openly and among the people attending. City staff, specifically Buddy Baker, who was then Finance Director, came along to answer questions outlining how city residents would be in their best interest economically and in the quality of the services they would enjoy. Most were unaware of the benefits. The night of the public hearing, only two people spoke against the annexation. My philosophy is that all people should be treated fairly, and when you can find common ground, focus on that. Many people have told me in recent weeks that we need a woman on city council, and I must say that in terms of qualifications, I have that one covered. But I hope that my experiences in public life are more important reasons to consider me. I have condemned more land than I ever want to again, but when I look at Lake McIntosh today and our water assurance, I find the result was well worth the effort and the pain. We opened streets that were dead ends, and Burlington traffic flows rather well compared to other cities I have visited. As a Burlington City School Board member, we merged the city and county school systems so that all children in our county would be benefited. Not much gets more difficult than those legislating experiences. I am fully aware that finding the best solution for the most people may not make everyone happy, but I listen, and I am reasonable, and I give the benefit of the doubt until I learn what I need to know. I'm a learner, and I'm very inquisitive. Though I have not done city work in many years, I will do my best to learn what I need to know to catch up. I'm very interested in the update to the Unified Development Ordinance. Even back in the day, we were often stymied by what it failed to address. I will try to bring thoughtfulness and energy to the work, which I greatly enjoyed when I was in public life before. My leadership record is before you. I was raised and swallowed "hook, line, and sinker", the John Kennedy quote. Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. I've been a doer all my life, solving the problems I came across, founding agencies that still exist in this community, some of which began as long ago as 1976. Many of them have morphed into nonprofits that I could not have imagined, solving problems that I knew nothing about, but I am proud of those who carried forth the vision from what I had done. I have lived here for 40 years with a five-year sojourn out of the country when my husband's work took us abroad. We returned to Burlington when we could have lived anywhere for all the right reasons. It has many of the best and most generous people I have ever known living in it. I hope to serve them through the great honor of being appointed to the Burlington City Council. Thank you for listening, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions, Mayor Protam Fawcett.
Thank you for applying, Ms. Hikes. Since your service in the city has been admirable, I think at the time that you served, East Burlington and North Burlington was sort of at their heyday maybe, not the heyday, but they were prosperous then. What do you see happening with North Burlington, I'm sorry, what do you bring to the table with North Burlington and East Burlington to make them viable again as they were in the past?
Well, I don't know that they were exactly thriving at that time, and there were certainly pockets where they were, or pockets where we really needed to do some improvement. I know that we've done amazing things in the city with the Community Development Block Grant. I don't have anything specific. I know I want to be involved in that. I've always kept in contact with people throughout the city. I've lost many of those contacts lately, but would be happy to get involved again. I'm very aware of the importance of being for the whole city and not portions of it, and certainly that's where my heart is, is doing what needs to be done for people who need jobs, need a break, and deserve the same quality of life that everybody lives.
And I think you answered my second question, because I was going to ask, you know, this council's been criticized for everybody living on West Burlington. I don't live in West Burlington. A couple others don't live in West Burlington. So what you said about representing the entire city bodes well, because that's what you have to do to be part of this council, or be a city council member is to represent the entire city. Again, I refer to North Burlington and East Burlington, because there are heavy pockets of bite there that we need to work on to bring that group of segment of the population back up to where they need to be. And I think that with your history with the city, that you may be able to help with that, and I think that if you were selected, then you could bring a lot to the table as far as working with all the groups here in Burlington. Again, I appreciate your applying to this, and I thank you very much for it.
I would also like to draw your attention to my involvement with Newland Elementary School, where we are working to improve literacy in that area, and that's also, there are some needs in that area of the city as well.
Councilmember Ward.
If you're selected, what are some of the goals you'd like to work toward accomplishing, you know? You haven't had a little time to think about it since the last meeting, and hopefully you've had a little time to think about some things you'd like to accomplish. If you would, you chair the council, you know, some of your thoughts.
Sure. I think you know that my husband and I have been involved in the downtown redevelopment, specifically with the co-op supporting that, and the reason that I bring that up is that I have a concern that I share with many, many people in the city that our children have moved away, and there are some young people in our community now who are active and engaged in what's going on, and I think that if they leave, they leave because of amenities and opportunity, job opportunities. So I'd have to say that those are priorities for me. Beyond that, I think that my goals are sort of to be a face for the community of reasonableness or accessibility, those kinds of things, but they're kind of nebulous rather than specific.
Well, in all fairness, I think you probably, you know, if you're selected, you'd have to get on here and see what we're up against. So I may have another question too, Mayor, but if you want to, Mr. Butler.
Councilmember Butler.
Kind of an extension of Councilmember Ward's question with regards to your goals and kind of what you may have thought about some of the things that are important to you. What do you view as what our major challenges or issues are in the coming 2015 and even a little beyond? What do you think some of the major issues that face our city are?
Probably what faces most cities. The important thing for cities to do, cities of our size, is to be able to provide services to people that they want, and that's what I think Burlington does particularly well, at least in my experience of it in the last few years. The number of times that I have had to ask the city for something, the replies have been swift and meaningful. So I think that's a major piece of it. Beyond that, you know, I think economic development continues to be a major concern for us. We are in, you know, on the one hand, I think that people will come simply because this is a good community, and we are part of this whole megalopolis that seems to be developing along the I-85 and I-40 corridor. Growth is inevitable, and I think that that's going to be one of the challenges for us, how we manage that, and how we manage the growth as well as continue to provide the kinds of amenities and services that we've always done. I remember years ago, understanding, beginning to understand that there are certain design points for cities and how many people we can handle doing a good job, and I think that's going to be one of the challenges. How do we keep that in balance, the number of people who are in the city, as well as our tax rate and what those services are going to be? Does that answer your...
You mentioned the tax rate. I've heard often our city manager talk about the unlimited needs that we have, but the very limited resources. How do you feel about our tax rate? Do you think that our tax rate is good where it's at? Do you think there should be raised, lowered? What's your thoughts on taxation in general?
That's a great loaded question, Mr. Butler. I would have to look at that, to be honest. It feels fair right now. I know that revaluation is coming along soon. I think we're going to have to look at what the meaning of that is for us. I think that we, I think it's pretty amazing what we do with the dollars that we have in taxes. I think, to further that, one of my concerns is that we keep up the infrastructure, and I don't, I'm not aware at the moment of what those needs are.
Sure.
But I know that all over the country, people are grappling, especially public officials are grappling with those issues, and I think we have to, otherwise, we're going to get caught. So I think we have to be careful, but I also think we have to be prudent.
Any other questions?
Ms. Hikes, thank you for being here, and thank you for putting forth your application and making, congratulations and making it to the final three. I have a couple of questions. What do you think that the citizens are looking for in a new council member?
I'm telling you, a lot of people, once this process started, have said to me that they're looking for a woman on city council. I'm not really clear what they mean by that. I just figure they figure that's a face that's missing, something representative.
If you were the one selected, what strong points do you bring to the council? I've heard what you said in your opening remarks.
I think two things. I think one of my real strengths is collaboration, and another strength is that I do my homework. I really enjoy doing the homework. I really enjoy the learning, so I try to get background on what I need to in order to make decisions. That's what I think I would hopefully bring.
If you're the one selected, what is your number-one concern coming into January?
I can't really think of anything that concerns me. I guess, you know, public life is tough. That would be my biggest concern. The work of the city is fascinating, but from time to time, it gets pretty uncomfortable, so I feel some concern about that.
Just out of curiosity, if you're the one not selected, do you have any interest in running in '15?
You know, this was sort of a test case to see how this goes for me and my family. So that's the best I can say at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question, Mayor. Could, you'd mentioned, you know, just a couple of minutes ago in response to Councilman Butler about the economic development. What are your thoughts about, you know, how the council can encourage economic development and job creation? You know, that seems to be on a lot of people's minds, not everybody, economic development and job creation. You have any thoughts?
Well, you know, I thought of a few things. I think that the major thing that we could be doing is encouraging small business, which, you know, everybody says that, and how that looks is another question. There are, there are a number of people in this community, young people, graduates of Elon that I'm familiar with, who are doing very imaginative things, very small things right now. Nothing that we're going to put on our balance sheet, but they could be encouraged in different ways, and I think that that's where the future is for us, and I really would like to see the city have more of a collaboration, if you will, with the business school at Elon, and see if there's not a way for us to encourage those young people to begin thinking entrepreneurially for this community. That's why I'm interested in the amenities as well. They are students who have lived here. They know what this community is like. They love it. It just seems like a natural way to pull those two things together.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. Hikes, could you give me your take on incentives, since we talked about economic development?
I have to say that I would have to look at that and think about that each time. I think it's a tough road we're on, where we're competing against each other economically for business, and I struggle with it, but I also know that it's the reality of, it's the nature of the beast right now.
Any questions for us, Ms. Hikes?
Are you having fun?
Sure. It's always, like, you described it better than we could. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You didn't answer my question.
On purpose, I might add. Next, the second candidate, Mr. Richard Parker. Welcome, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, council. I'm privileged to be here today. I thank you for selecting me to be one of the three candidates for this seat. I've been in Burlington all my life. When people ask me that question, "How long have I been here?", I always say, "I've been here all my life, and I'm proud of the fact that I grew up here and went to schools here." It's been a great privilege for me. My first job, when I was 16, was at the city pool, and my first boss was Joe Davidson. So I've been around city leaders and city people for many, many years. After high school, I went off to the Navy, and I came back to Burlington and went in business with my father, and I've been in the real estate business for over 40 years. But one of the first things my father did when I came to work for him was he brought me over here to City Hall, and he said, "Son, if you're going to be a success, you have to know these people at City Hall." And so he introduced me to J.D. McIntosh, Jack Childers, and the others, and I've been coming to city council meetings, I think, since the 80s. When I first started coming to city council, you could smoke in here, if you remember that. Smoke, blue smoke, it roared in this room. So I've been coming to city council meetings for a number of years, and for the last 10 years, I've been on boards and commissions. I spent six years on Housing Authority, and in 2010, I got on the Planning and Zoning Board, chairman of planning and zoning right now, and I really enjoy coming to the meetings. I come to all the meetings, as you know, all the work sessions, all the council meetings, and all the annual budget meetings. And so I've been a student of this city council for many years. I've learned and listened. I've gotten acquainted with each councilman. I know all the department heads pretty well, and I just, I just feel in my heart that my time has come to sit on the other side of the tape. I've been on this side for years and years and years, and I've learned what it is you do and how you do it, and I'm interested in this job. I don't have a whole lot to say on my resume. I've been in Kiwanis. I've been in JC's. I've served in my church in all kinds of, you know, leadership positions. I'm an Eagle Scout. I've done many things in the public to serve my community. I'm making an investment right now, right down the street with my new house right around the corner, so I'm moving to downtown because I believe in downtown just like Kathy. I think we're on the same page. I'm investing, I'm putting my money where my mouth is about downtown Burlington. I've been coming to downtown Burlington all my life, ever since I was a little boy. So I'm very interested in this job. If you choose someone else, I will stay at P&amp;Z and continue on and do my best there, but I'm ready for a change, and I'm ready to move to the other side of the table.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for being one of the final candidates here. Same question, East Burlington, North Burlington. You said you've been here all your life, so you know the situation on each side of town, so just let me hear your take on that.
Well, it's like you've said at the council meetings many times, all we can do in city council is to encourage developers and people with incentives perhaps to go into East Burlington to build the shops and, you know, build the stores and build the, the largest store we have in East Burlington, or in Burlington is the Walmart over there in East Burlington. There have been some planning and zoning upgrades and changes. The old Western Electric Plant is maybe coming down. It's something new going there, but, you know, East Burlington is, needs our economic incentives to get more business to move over there. Things like what John Peterson has done over there with his entrepreneurial workshop and, that's the kind of things we need over there, and I think the council can encourage that.
And I'll just get out of the way with questions. Your incentives, your take on offering incentives to companies?
Well, it's a sticky wicket. You have to, you have to look at the competition, what your competition is doing, and they're all giving incentives. The county's having a meeting tonight about one, I believe, for Southern Seasons, so incentives are the nature of the beast, just like Ms. Hikes said. I agree with her.
Councilmember Wood.
Richard, what would you like to work toward accomplishing during your tenure on the council if you're selected?
Well, the UDO is a big, is a big deal that we're going to hear more about tonight, and I think that's, that's an accomplishment that we need to strive for, and then we've got to look at that reevaluation in '16. You know, that's, that's going to be a big deal too, and fixing a budget on that and a new tax rate, that's, that's going to be a big job, and when we get done with it, it'll be an accomplishment. So I'm looking to, you know, help out with those two, two big major pieces that we're looking at in the next 12 to 15 months.
Yeah, one more follow-up, Mayor, for good. What are your ideas and thoughts about economic development and job creation? I know you've been coming to many, many meetings a long time, and I'm sure you've heard, you know, the council discuss economic incentives, but do you have any thoughts, you know, other than economic incentives, you know, about economic development or job creation?
Well, Burlington has to present itself to the Piedmont, to the area, so that people want to come here, that people want to move here, to live here, and to grow a business here. I think economic incentives are necessary to bring people in. We've paid them out before, and we've got the results with the businesses that have come here. I mean, Alamance County and Burlington have just gotten great businesses in this area based on incentives, bringing people in. The Sheets Factory is just, you know, magnificent, and that kind of stuff is what brings the jobs, and I think you're doing it. City council is doing it right. So I'm in favor of incentives.
So continue on the same track?
Yeah, I think we have to. That's the way we've been going. We just have to keep going that way, I think. There's no other way to go.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler.
Richard, I sort of follow up with the same line of questioning with Ms. Hikes. In your opinion, what do you think some of the most significant issues that the city's going to be facing next year and then beyond?
Well, revaluation is a big, a big issue. We're going to have to face that in '16. That's coming up, so I think that's a big issue for us to deal with. Another issue, and Celo has spoken to this many times, about landlords cleaning up properties. I think we need to take a stronger stand on that, about landlords letting properties get to minimum housing or be below minimum housing standards. That's something that I think is a big issue in East Burlington, North Burlington, and in all parts of the city. There's, there's houses that really need either be raised or be brought There's houses that really need either be raised or be brought up to standards. So I think that's an issue that I would like to see us put a little bit more emphasis on, is the housing, to have decent, affordable housing for people. That comes from my Burlington Housing Authority days.
You've obviously been very attentive and been to most work sessions and council meetings, certainly since my involvement, going back to 2007. But most recent, if you think back within the last year or so, what do you think that this council has done that would be an accomplishment that we could carry forward or do even more?
Well, I make mention of the Sheets Factory, the economic incentives and the way we presented that package to Sheets to get them here. I thought that was just an outstanding project to bring to our community. And I just would like to see us do more of those kind of incentive packages and economic development in the coming years. I'd like for us to see, just bring more of that stuff in if we can.
You've obviously sent through, you've sit through numerous budget cycles and budget sessions, and we've had some discussions afterwards on numerous occasions. But how do you feel about our tax rate and our situation? Are you, do you believe it's where it needs to be? Do you think it should be up or down? What do you think? What do you see as?
I think it's right where it should be. I think Harold and his staff have done an awesome job at balancing this budget and providing for our community the things that we need. The new fire station over there is just going to, I just can't wait to see the ribbon cutting on that. Have a new fire station over there in West Burlington. But I think it's about right, Jim.
Richard, congratulations for being one of the final three. With that being said, what do you think the citizens are looking for in another council member?
Common sense, someone who will listen to all sides of the story, as I have done at P&amp;Z for a number of years, try to evaluate what the citizens are saying, listening carefully, and making a prudent decision which is best for the city. I think I bring an element of common sense and business savvy. I've been and run a business for 40 years. So, you know, I've proven myself that we can, I can do that. And I feel like I'm a voice for small business and for others who, you know, are, I just provide a common sense approach to solving the problems.
All right. I understand your philosophy there. What would be your strong points as a person that would be at this diocese?
My strongest point would be compassion.
If you were selected, what would be your number one concern?
I think the next year would be the concern of the unified development, the UDO that Ms. Nelson's going to present to us tonight. I think that's the number one concern for the upcoming year and then the reevaluation, like I've mentioned, the next year.
If not selected, do you have any plans for running in '15?
I don't know. I've been toying with that idea about running. But the person who's, who I would, I don't want to run against anybody because I like everybody up here. That's why I've never run, because I've been really happy with who's there. But if I were to gain the seat, I would probably give this one year a try and see if I really, really liked it. And then if I felt it in my heart, I would run. But if I didn't win the seat, I'd hate to run against CeeLo for his seat because I like CeeLo. And I like Bob, and I like Jim. So that's why I've never run.
That's a good answer. Any other questions from you guys? Anyone? Richard, questions for us?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Upchurch, welcome.
Thank you. Already making a mess of the place. First, I'd like to say I'm not the greatest public speaker in the world, so just have to bear with me. I've got some, plenty of notes here and bullet points to keep me on track and make sure I get everything across.
Just relax and take your time.
Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Mayor and council, I just want to say, like the others, it is an honor to be standing here before you today and to be selected in the final three. I think all the 12 or 13 candidates total, I guess it was, one was not eligible, all wanted to serve the city well. And I'd also like to congratulate my other two potential appointees on their selection as well. I'll tell you a little about myself. I've moved to the city in June of 1999 after I was tapped to manage my employer's office that's being set up in Greensboro, or was being set up in Greensboro. We visited Burlington several times over the years, since the early 90s, to spend time with my in-laws who lived here and ended up retiring here. We could have lived anywhere in the triad, but we chose Burlington as our home. I've been married to my wife Angela for 24 years. We have two sons, Nicholas, who is 19. He's in his second year at Alamance Community College. He plans to pursue a computer engineering degree at UNC Greensboro next fall. My youngest son is 15. He was born in Alamance Regional, right when we moved here, a couple of months later. So that was an interesting transition. But he's a freshman this year at River Mill Academy in Graham. And I also serve on the board of directors there at Graham as their chairman. Since moving to our city, I've been very active in the community as a volunteer in several capacities, as well as a youth coach and mentor for our youth in the city's soccer, baseball, and basketball programs. I'm an active softball player. Wouldn't say a great one, but I'm an active softball player in the city's recreation program. And I play baseball on the Alamance Giants 45 and Over Baseball League. So I don't heal quite as good as I used to, but I'm still out there playing. I've coached baseball at the youth middle school, high school, in a very competitive travel level. And throughout my career, we focused on three things with the kids. Number one was fundamentals. Number two was a positive attitude. And number three was 100% effort. And I've really tried to instill that in our players over the years, no matter how small or old. And I truly feel the same thing applies to everything we do in our own lives. So attitude and effort are the two main things, just showing up is half the battle. But you've got to have a positive attitude and you've got to have 100% effort. As far as work, I'm the executive director of Premier Financial Services. It's a division of a national home furnishings franchisor. I wear many hats in that capacity, just like many people do. I assist, you know, I guess the main thing I do is helping our potential franchisees start their business, you know? I really, I help these entrepreneurs in preparing their operational, financial, and sales goals, as well as assist them in their bank presentation for SBA funding. Another thing I do is handle monthly budgeting and facilitating monthly payables for these dealers, as well as providing operational, financial support on a weekly and monthly basis. And then finally, on an annual basis, I compile all of our franchisees' financial data for our yearly franchise disclosure document that is sent to the Federal Trade Commission. I was appointed to the city's Recreation and Parks Commission in 2009 and later reappointed in 2012. Enjoy working with Tony over here. I've served several times what I'll call the controversial fees and charges subcommittee. And it recommended to council to raise and lower some of the non-resident sports fees. So you guys have heard all about that. My opinion changed on this topic, really after discussions with fellow city and county citizens on and off the field, out there playing with them or just hearing from them, wherever it may be. I was elected to the board of directors of River Mill Academy, which is a charter school in Graham, you probably know about, in 2010. I was reelected in 2013. I was elected by my fellow directors at the school as vice chairman in 2012, and chairman in 2013, and once again in 2014. I've worked very hard with my fellow directors at the school, which are nine in total, including myself. And we don't always see eye to eye. I'm sure the same applies here as well. But we do work things out to best support our students, faculty, staff, and parents of the school. We're in charge of a $4 million budget there that's growing to $6 million within the next two years, based on the expansion plans that we have. We have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee the federal, state, and local funds in our care. And we've managed to build a reserve of over $2 million based off those funds and growing over the last several years. We're currently undergoing a $4 million expansion project, and we will fund nearly half that cost with money that we saved over the years. In addition, I've worked closely with our state legislatures, Senator Gunn and Representatives Riddell and Ross, on a variety of issues regarding our school and state. I'd like to say, through my successful work and civic experience, I've become accustomed to making hard decisions. It's not always easy. But I feel the biggest attribute I can bring to the city council is my ability to look at, excuse me, all sides of an issue before forming an opinion that is based on fact that will serve the citizens of our city. If appointed, I look forward to serving the citizens of our city. Thank you very much.
Mayor Prokhorov?
Thank you, Mr. Upchurch, for being one of the finalists. You heard the question that I'm going to ask you again, East Burlington, North Burlington?
Right, yep. I did hear the question. Not going to dodge it. I'm going to answer it right now. But I'll tell you, I've heard it many times, even preparing for this, or maybe I overprepared, I don't know. I went to the, with the help of Ms. Ward, I found the old city council work session from the previous time there was an appointee. So I reviewed that, and I knew that question was coming. And that's fine. First of all, I'd like to say, I don't like looking at it as East Burlington or West Burlington, whatever. We're really just Burlington. But obviously, there are certain issues, no matter where we're at in the city. And you just have to identify the issues and come up with a solution. I know there's problems. Everybody focuses on the problems. But if we focus on whatever the solutions may be, I know there's been some community meetings over there. I'm not quite sure what came from all those meetings, but, you know, I know it certainly identified some problems. And how we going about solving them, I don't know yet. But as soon as I, if I get on council, I guess I should say, I'll be happy to look at those issues one by one and take a proactive role with it.
Thank you. And the next question would be incentives?
Incentives, I think it's just part of the game right now, you know? I mean, the game changes. The game is trying to attract businesses here to create jobs so they can live all over our city. We need more jobs. We need more top-line revenue, you know, is what I call it, from the business world. Even at the school, you know, we focus on being, you know, we call it being in the business of educating our kids. And it is a business. I mean, even running the city is a business. I understand that. So how do we attract more revenue there? That's just, that's the nature of the beast right now, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it. Because it certainly did land Sheets, it landed Honda Arrow, and landed some other great things that came here.
Councilmember Wood?
If you're selected, what are some of the goals or things you'd like to work toward accomplishment during your tenure?
Well, I kind of alluded to it earlier. My number one thing would be to try and bring new jobs in business here to the city of Burlington, without question. That's certainly easier said than done. I realize that 100%. But we have a tremendous, we have plenty of things to offer here in the city of Burlington. We're geographically located right in the center of the state, right in the middle of the east coast. We've got a great airport right here that would serve many needs that we have. We have two major interstates that run right through our city. We have an abundance of water, thanks to the, you know, council, you guys, and before. You know, there's a lot of, hard decisions were made in the past. I'm sure they were controversial at the time, but without question, trying to bring new jobs to our city.
One follow-up, Mayor Prokhorov. What are your ideas and thoughts about, I mean, economic development? I know we have the incentives, but job creation, do you have any specific?
Nothing 100% specific. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. But nothing 100%, 100% specific. But I think what we need to do is really promote the city, you know, from a marketing standpoint. I know the chamber does a great job doing it as well. But what, you know, we really need to promote what the city has to offer. And frankly, it has a lot to offer. It's a great place to live and raise a family. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't. So, you know, we need to promote the positives that we have here and tie that with the economic incentives. It's part of the game. I think, you know, we could land some other companies here as well that would provide for jobs for all over the city and certainly help us keep our tax rate where it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowler?
Thank you, Jim. If we take the same questioning path as before, in your opinion, what do you think are two or three of the most important issues that are going to be facing us in the next year or two?
Well, it's a good question, and there's several, you know? Again, in my preparation, not only did I review the previous time that people were up here doing this, I looked at previous city council meetings. I've been to several city council meetings and reviewed the agendas. And there are several things that need to be done in the year. Number one, there's several things you guys have done in the past year as well that we need to make sure we have the ability to pay for and budget for. Number one being the public transit. I mean, it's a great program that we offer for our citizens, but we have to make sure we have the means to pay for it within the budget that we have and the tax rate that we have. That is one. You know, another item, and, you know, it's been in the paper, I don't know how many times over the last year, we've had some sewer problems with some, excuse me, sewer line breakage and whatnot. So I assume that there's, you know, something being done to research that and how to, you know, better analyze our infrastructure here for the city.
With regards to economic development, you were talking about incentives. What are your thoughts on our tax rate? Same question I asked the others?
That's a great question, too. I don't think anybody wants their taxes to go up. And I'll answer it directly. I think it's fine right where it is. You know, I know it's been lowered in the past, it's been raised in the past, but I think we need to make sure that it doesn't go up, just like any business. You know, the city's business is supporting its citizens. So how do we get more money for the business? That's through the economic development that I alluded to earlier. I mean, that's how we can raise our top-line revenues and make sure that we have the funds needed to provide for all the citizens.
Jim, thank you. Congratulations for being one of the finalists as well. What do you think our citizens are looking for in our next council?
You know, my previous two, people had the same question and certainly nearly the same answer, but they want openness. They want, they want to be able to, be able to call someone or get in touch with them. I'm very open. My number's out there. My email's out there. I'm easy to get ahold of. I'm a relatively familiar face in town. But I think the biggest thing they want is someone that doesn't have an agenda, which I don't, and the ability to really objectively look at all sides of an issue. You know, public transit, for example. I'm sure, you know, none of you guys were professionals or knew everything there was to know about public transit. But if you truly researched the subject and analyzed it, analyzed it before you made your decision, that's what they're looking for, the ability to look at all angles of whatever you're voting on. We're certainly not experts on everything there is, but to objectively look at all angles and then make an informed decision.
All right. What would be your strong points?
I think just that, just what I alluded to. That's exactly what, that's the same mentality I use over at the school, and that's the same thing I would provide to the council.
What is your number one concern, then, if you're selected?
For the city? Without question, economic development, so we can keep our tax base low.
Same question. If you're not the one selected, are you going to run in '15?
Yes. I'd already planned to anyways, till the seat came up, so.
Questions for Mr. Upchurch? Any more? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Here's what I'm thinking, guys. Obviously, tomorrow night, on the agenda is supposed to be the item of making our final choice. I'd make a recommendation to the council that we study what we've heard tonight and then at the next meeting, the second meeting in December, which is the date of that, the 16th, we make a final decision.
Fine.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we do. Let the notes reflect. Instead of having the item on the agenda, we remove that item, put it on for the 16th.
Would you guys like the copy of the notes to read?
Yes, I would. It'd be great. And what we'd say as we conclude this aspect, then we're going to reconvene downstairs. We appreciate very much all three of you candidates coming in here tonight. It's tough standing in front of a group of guys and having a dialogue and conversation. We appreciate that. We respect that. There was some very, very good information coming out of all three of you tonight. And this is going to be a difficult decision for this council, I'm sure. And I can only speak for myself, but it's exciting to see people wanting to get involved and have good information, especially about economic development. So we will adjourn here and go downstairs. And I'm going to be missing when we go downstairs. I have a meeting at 7:00 out of 10, so I'll be leaving. But Mayor Prokhorov Fossett will take over. Thank you very much for being here.
Mayor, congratulations on your performance. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
And the rest of the team would love this.
You're right about that, buddy.